You guys ready?
I'm ready to start.
Are you guys ready?
I'm ready to start.
Are you guys ready?
I'm ready to start.
You guys ready?
Yeah.
Alright.
Sorry. I was trying to watch some song.
No, no, no.
Chair right there.
No, no, no. This is our guest. It's amazing. We don't do this every week, just for special customers. How do I feed the music? I just said stop. Alright, so thanks for coming back, Rich. I think the gang did a great job. We reviewed things this morning. I think we got it all done just in the nick of time.
Just finished it.
So I'm really excited for them to show what they worked on. Tim was great answering questions through the weekend and stuff, so that was, I think that made it very helpful. We did a survey class, survey visualization class yesterday, and they've incorporated a lot of what they learned in that class. So kind of best practices from a survey perspective. They're gonna talk through, I think Robbie's gonna start, right? With the workflow.
Yep.
Alteryx workflow and how we structured the data to get it to work the way that we needed it for the project. And then we did basically two projects. One team did the elected officials version, or whatever you call them. Commissioners?
Members.
Members, okay. Council members?
Yeah, council members.
The council members version. And then another team did a version for the residents of Surry County. So we're gonna do the council members version first and then the residents version. So any feedback you have along the way, feel free to just interrupt and ask questions.
Sure.
They're prepared to answer them. Alright, so over to you, Robbie. And then we just get to sit here and drink beer while it's happening.
I like that deal.
That's my week. Okay, hi guys, I'm Orchard and everyone else that's listening in. So this week we had the survey data and the file we were sent it in was in SPSS file. Still sort of being a student, I was always down on SPSS with a key and have a look at what the dataset looked like. It was a bit like this, where this is the variable view, so you can see what variables are, how it's spiced into the data type, as well as how it's labeled, which is really useful when we were looking at certain sort of questions and areas and looking into what the ranges were, especially once we moved it to Alteryx, which I'll be watching shortly. So in terms of the data, what we quickly noticed was firstly, there was a unique identification for each customer. So we weren't able to pivot directly. And secondly, the questions were cross and realistically, we wanted a long, thin database of just each question answered, so it was easier to understand. Given that we are the information lab, the way we thought of doing that was using an Alteryx workflow. Now, we firstly asked for the dataset which is given to us, which is the 2013 to 2015 dataset. And then we also received on Monday evening, the 2010 to 2015. The difference between these two is the first one includes the LSA codes, which is the location data, and the second one doesn't, it just has the raw data. So in order to blend these in together, what we did was firstly, Tableau filtered out the quarters. So it took out the ones which were already mentioned within the file of the LSOAs. And then we just did a simple union on the rest of the field, so we just added it all up together. Now, given that there wasn't any customer IDs and the way that the data was sorted was by customer response per question, we then realized we should add in a record ID. A record ID adds just a numeric value from 1, 2, 3, 4, just in order from 0 onwards. And that gave us a unique identifier per customer. We then did a couple of text to columns to split out things like district firstly, then the depreciation variable, which we then were able to rename, and also the urban rules split, which again, we were able to rename with the Alteryx. Then, as I mentioned, we had wanted to pivot this data. So what you can see here so far, what we've done is we've got two data sources, blended them together, filtered the parts out that we don't want, that would create duplicates, adding in a region ID to make up for what we've not got. And then we've done text to columns with the just renaming as we go on, just to make sure we know what the data source is showing. So we move through again forward. I'll mention this bit at the bottom shortly, but after the cross tab, we were able to pivot to cross and just to look at what the data looked like, just to see what the data looked like rather, adding in a couple of sorts. Now, what we can do very quickly is just look at the data here and open it up and just see the nature of the data. So as you can see, once we've added a field, it hasn't done anything but replaced the ones we already have, which is still shown here. It's just added in new columns with the rename and the split that we want. Let's minimize that and just keep moving forward. Answers, we've done a big number and a text, we've done it by the dashes. Now, what we then found was some of the answers, we go back into SPSS. The variable view, so for instance. Let's find an example. So for instance, this one, they're not assigned a value. So in the quotation marks, you can see what was actually returned within the field. And things like Buddhist would stay in column 1, and then you'd have the text in the rest of them, which are assigned a value in column 2. But to get around this, we assign a value to each and every answer and 0 to the indifferent one. So for instance, don't know. So we're able to do that, and then within this, we could trim out all the spaces, because that would make it easier to sort once we've got into Tableau. So just to summarize here, this part was mainly look at the data, seeing what we can do with it and just replacing any sort of issues we have with the data source. Moving forward. The text to columns again here was to split out the value, which is what we did the data preparation for. And then we also split out by the quarter to find out, do a date time fit. Just so once we map it on Tableau, we can add in comparison across the years. And this would mean that we can do a comparison, we can see the ranges, we can see the differences between how things change over time. And then this part here, these two tools here are where we de-selected columns we didn't want, so duplications, and null values that we won't be using. And then we went down to this part of the dataset, which is where we did a join. Now, this is where there was a bit of crossover from the original data prep and as we move forward in the week, the split between the groups. So we had a team residents and a team councillors. So the councillors group, what they wanted to look at was things like CCG codes and LSA codes. And what Alex and Hash found was they have two data files when they looked into the source. Do you want to talk about the issues you found with the LSA codes?
So there's three LSOAs that where the codes changed over the years. So in the dataset, if you're still currently using those three old codes, it comes an issue when you're trying to map that in Tableau. And by the way, the mapping in Tableau is not native to Tableau. You have to download an add-on which Craig Bloodworth from the Information Lab has created. So it's a shape file that you need to include into, when you download, you put it into my Tableau repository. It just goes into a specific folder. So when you right-click on the LSA, you choose LSA name or the code, and then it maps it. And then on the map, then you can drag any measure of satisfaction score in LSA to the contract. So that was one of the issues.
There was one that was missing, wasn't there?
There was one missing.
There was one missing.
It just happened to be certainly later.
It was like right in the middle of the county too. It looked like a big giant black hole in the middle of the county. It ended in 58, that's all I heard, or 48, it was 48 or 58. But yeah, we asked Tim about that and he told us it just, it must mean that there were no surveys for that area, which he thought would be unusual, but.
Yeah, I think he emailed us back, he said it's a really rich area and was probably the not home.
I think he just said it was, there wasn't many people there, and they were there very rarely at home, so.
Yeah, based on mosaic codes, based on their demographics, on the mosaic types.
Chelsea fans.
So that's this area here, where they've added the LSA codes, the ward codes and the name. And this is the council.
That's CCGs.
CCG. So and then we joined them together, went through and spit out things that we wanted, what we didn't want to. Again, with a bit of data preparation. Joined them together and down here, added it all together. While that was going on, we spoke to Emma White, and she mentioned that when we're going through a server list, we should really try and restring the rows as much as we can with themes and editors, which we've sort of going through in this stuff in Tableau. It'd be easier to understand smaller sort of grouping and themes. So it signs like themes to them and also assigned types of questions. So for instance, these were even as following in a tagging of perceived quality of services overall and street cleaning, livability. And then this question name in types field, assigned to the question number, the type. Sorry. Yeah, so this is just spitting out and writing out the actual question text to put in to the data source itself, which made it easier for us to analyze it rather than quickly referring back and forth to either the PDF or to the question that we had. Now, as you can see, there's a lot of data preparation that has gone into this, and we've put in a lot of added stuff, we've tried to put in themes and tried to make the data as rich as possible, so we can just gather as much information as we can. A lot of this was done at the start, in the middle, and also tacked on at the end. And that's the beauty of Alteryx, I think, because you can break the data, you can go back and fit in things, and then go back in and fit in things. Think this was, should say the 10th time I said, guys, this is the final data source, you can use it. And yeah, so as we then move forward, we then added in a union, filtering out things we didn't want, and joining on the question number, making sure that everything we had was properly labeled. But the themes, what we did was we created entirely concrete sets. But we thought, well, if we can add in columns in Alteryx, it just makes loading time that much faster. So we added in themes as Boolean functions, so 0 if it's not in the field and 1 if it isn't field. And that worked well throughout. So all we did was, we started with certain columns, we ended up with a lot more, just to enrich the data that much further. Not long left now. And then this is where we joined together the councils and LSA codes to add in the council wards, the missing LSA codes, and just blend it all together so that we don't have any holes in the data source. And this is where we added in local authority codes to match with, to giving the name of the local authority that the LSA codes matched up to within the data source. And finally, this is where we, as I mentioned before, changed the quarter dates. So it was a string field, it was quarter 2, financial year 2013, 14. Within, we're able to, with again, a long process written by Tableau, to change it into a date time field, which would mean that we can look at things over time in Tableau. So just to summarize what we've done. To go back to the start, we start the dataset with 33,000 records and 59 fields, and 60 fields here, 13,000. Brought them all together and added 60 fields with 33,000 records. And by adding in, passing out, splitting, cleaning up the data, running through data preparation, we ended up with is 1.6 billion records, 39 fields, and a much smaller dataset. And this meant that we were able to all use a single Tableau data extract. It's not here. And run the processes and create the visualizations you've seen, it's presented by colleagues. So I think I'll pass on to Emily and Hash and Alex and Demian, who will show you what they've done in terms of what to present to councils.
Yeah.
I wanted to that, thank you. With data prep side.
Okay, so on Tuesday evening, I said, okay, guys, we've got the data ready, it's all sorted. And I said the same thing three times on Wednesday afternoon. And then said it on Monday morning, and I said it on yesterday evening about 3 o'clock. So as we went along, we found out there were different things that we needed to add in, things that we needed to change, things that we could add in, that might be nice to add in. So overall, I think I've spent about a day and a half, two days just in time with communities.
In Alteryx.
In Alteryx, yeah. But that was.
But it was a major work for everyone else so much easier.
Yeah, oh yeah, very important, yeah.
Because, I mean, with the data source itself, what we put into Alteryx, as you can see, the SPSS file.
Quite messy.
It's very messy.
Yeah.
And once we cleaned it up, it was so much easier to work.
Yeah.
The thing is, you know, once you build it once, you don't need to do it again. Because all that effort, you know, anytime a new survey comes in, you just throw it in and it just gets out of there. It's not, you don't have to change anything in your workflow from then on.
Unless the survey is completely different.
Well, yeah. The survey hasn't changed in like 10 years, so.
Oh, really? Okay, that's, that's okay.
That helps.
Yeah, I hope you have it, because we did plenty of the data together.
Okay, so before I get into the dashboard, I want to provide a little bit of context about the thought process behind architecting this particular piece. Because, you know, when we were reading this survey, we were absolutely thinking about, from the perspective of, if I was a council member, what action do I take from this? And, you know, as I'm reading it, I'm just like, you know, there's a lot of really good information. There's like things about like how have we been doing across time? What are the relevant questions that have been binned in it? And so in some ways, the context isn't very good, but it's difficult, because if I am a council member for a particular district, how do I make an influence in this particular way? And the current way in which the survey is coming out, it's challenging to make those decisions. So A, how do we enhance what's already really good, the time dimension, into an actionable measure? And B, how do we provide context so that people feel like this is how I can actually do something with the data that you provided me? So just, I guess maybe we can jump into the dashboard now. What we've done is we've built this piece.
I think Ash needs her, somebody to give her control.
Oh, no, no, this is my screen. It's just very slow to get to the cloud to get back out here. But what we've done is we've identified a couple of key metrics that people want to be seeing at the very beginning. Take a look here.
It'll come up there, it goes.
Yeah.
Go ahead, throw them in the presentation box.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Which is for the, for the six drivers.
Look at the delay.
For the six drivers, how are we doing today in this quarter? How have we changed from the previous quarter? And how has this quarter done over a time span compared against the county? So what we really want to enable a council member to do is that if they happen to be the council member overseeing Guilford, how have they done against the county? How have they been doing this quarter? And how have they trended compared to the previous quarter? So then they're able to understand, have I done really well? Have I, or do I need to improve? You know, A, do I need to take an action? This is what this particular dashboard answers.
So when you're looking at this now, you see all those arrows pointing down. That means every key metric is down versus the previous quarter.
3K.
Versus the previous survey.
Yes.
Okay. And then kind of explain what the lines are in this.
Oh, yeah.
So she talked about, you know, the context. One was how we, you know, so the current reporting doesn't really give you any comparisons, really. You know, so the comparisons they were looking at is how am I doing compared to my previous period? And also, how am I doing across time? And then how am I doing it compared to the rest of the county? So the county as a whole.
Yeah.
So if we take a look at the lines here, you know, this, I believe, the gray line is the district line. And what we've done is.
The other way around.
Oh, sorry. The gray line is actually the county line, and then this, the green line, is actually the district line. So we're seeing for this particular district, in the perceived quality of services overall, they're a little bit lower than how the county is doing. So that tells you that they can, I guess, see, or like if they were to look through some of the other districts, which other districts have done really well, maybe talk to them about what they're doing really well as a way to improve.
So another example to look at is the 83% that's on the bottom right there, where it says local area deprivation and diversity. What is the, what's the 83? And which was the 93 of the separate questions?
Exactly, so in some cases.
So we probably should add that in there as, you know, see, you could see the text in the question there.
Is that, it's on the.
Well, but I mean, without having to hover over it.
Yes.
But anyway, let's just assume it's there. So for a question that has 83%, you can see the green line is generally above the county the whole way. So for that particular question, it's overall, how satisfied are you with your neighborhood as a place to live? So for this, for Guilford, the people are generally happier than the county as a whole.
Yeah, exactly. So that means they'll probably be getting questions from other people, so lower in that's right.
Sure.
So.
Just change the district and see how it goes.
Yeah, yeah, sure, sure, we can change the district. Is there a district you want to take a look at?
Take a look, um, let's have a go, I'm going to Guilford's. Trying to be one that's quite different.
Let's have a look at time range.
So again.
That's not the card.
Yes.
Oh, well, the.
Yeah, it is, it's just very slow.
Oh. And that's how bad my eyesight is too.
Almost. There we go.
Here we go.
So it seems like.
Oh, wow, look at the one, the 56% one, how much lower that one is than the county.
Yeah, direct communication. Kind of agree with a little there.
So the green line doesn't change.
Yeah.
No matter which district you pick.
Yeah. I can, that's really useful. You can see just that glance, how you, how you compare against the county.
Yes.
Which is exactly what you want for a high level KPI.
Yeah.
So do we have an example where the arrows flip, flip the other direction?
I haven't actually gone through all of them.
Oh, we're just picking up. There aren't that many to go through.
What is that 2% or 4%? Is that like, it should be 60?
That's their, that's their score, their net, what do you, net satisfaction score?
Uh, yeah, so the scores for perceived quality of services that they net satisfaction score, as well as for leave, street cleaning and livability might be a net satisfaction score. But the other ones, um.
So is that like, you know, flat choices?
Are you agreeing with net promoter score?
A little bit, yes.
It's the same idea. It's calculated.
Yeah, we did the two.
Fairly satisfied plus fairly satisfied minus the very unparalete.
It looks like the arrows aren't updating. So, because yeah, they none of them changed and the percentage just didn't change, so we can look at that afterwards. But ideally, the arrows are flipping around towards one another, so we can look at them afterwards.
My kind of.
Yeah.
But you get the idea.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So like the one on the upper right that says 37%, that looks like it's up versus the prior quarter.
Sorry, this is going to change real quick as I put them to the map. If you guys are, any more questions about this piece? Great.
So how does that kind of compare to? How actionable do you think that is versus what they're currently using? Now, whether they'll take action or not is another thing, but.
Yeah, my initial reaction is that members will look at that and they're not very able to start reading it. They'll start asking questions.
Yeah.
Because they're. Yeah, no, it actually is good, because we want to engage with the data. And they don't tend to engage with the data since it's at the moment. So I think, yeah, it's, like I say, they, the way members tend to work, they work very hard. So they want to look at something.
Yes.
They want to say, how does that compare to, you know, to the last quarter, the county as a whole, and a borough or a district? So that's the sort of stuff that's really useful to them, and then we start getting questions.
Exactly, yeah. The next piece actually was, you know, this dashboard just tells you, you need to take an action somewhere, but it doesn't tell you where you need to take the action. So we had a challenging time figuring out how do we partition the areas of responsibilities. So I think the next piece is really about, how do you get more granular than a district? Moving to LSOAs. So I'm going to let Alex talk. Yeah, there you go. It's 10 feet away. Dude, that's crazy.
So my knowledge of, sorry, geography is absolutely shocking, so thankfully we have the data for mapping it. So as Emily said, we've got this add-on which Craig has put on his blog, so it gives us these sort of polygon data for, possibly to do county, but the ones we decided to pick out were LSA, the most granular district level. And also we found CCG, so we thought might be something that we're investigating. And so you can just, before I do change, so this, the measure that we've got on here is just the net satisfaction score of this quarter minus the one for the previous quarter as a percentage essentially. So you can just kind of see, have we gone up or have we gone down really? So depending, you know, which part of, sorry, you're looking after, you can see. But you should probably start really at district level, probably gives a better overview. So I'm not sure how long this is going to take, but.
Could use a Vandalay also.
Same computer.
Is this a computer? Is that the actual?
Probably.
It was slow when I was using it earlier today, maybe need a reboot or something.
I need a new computer as well, I need it.
It isn't it?
So this is just at district level, and I mean, the colors, it looks like they're all the same color and stuff. That's only because the change between them is, it's only ever so slides. So you can obviously change the color code if you wanted to really accentuate the warmth and the difference, but there is a difference as it were. So I guess you probably would want to start at this level, see district, and then then you can then look down into, you know, wherever you want to look at LSA level or what. So I think that we kept it obviously very simple at this stage, we're just using one measure, but you know, there's certainly scope to put, move the map to the left a little bit, and we can put something like what Emily had on the first dashboard, or we can give people's dashboards, put some more graphs next door to it. And so you can highlight your district, and then you'll get a corresponding timeline up next to it. Something like when I was, well, barely done the last year or so. So it's just a simple example, but it just kind of breaks down the data by nearly into the different regions. So I've got the CCG as well. So I don't know how it works for healthcare. So I don't know how it works from a healthcare point of view, but we just thought, I think some of the quiz, if you have got healthcare metrics and stuff, at least looking into from a CCG point of view. And if that's something more for the councils, maybe more for the NHS, but I think it might at least help break it down. Just another way of looking at it. So that was, hopefully it just gives you a little bit of an idea that you can view the data in a different way.
The biggest challenge with this was actually getting the data in the first place. Yeah, submitting the structure so that we could actually produce the maps more. So they spent a lot of time just trying to gather that piece, and then as we're, they just throw it back over to Robbie to incorporate into that workflow, we changed the workflow again.
It looks a little bit straightforward, but it was quite difficult.
So and these all look like they're the same exact color, they're not, but they just all have to be around the same percentage. But the scale goes from minus 100 to 100, because that's the score. So, you know, we thought we would fix the scale so that it's consistent for all the different maps. And also, there are. Um, and also, there may be, you know, it may be useful, do we have this at the question level as well? Because this is overall for.
That's right.
So we could break this all straight down by questions?
Super useful.
Yeah, we could add, we could add that as a filter option in there as well, for then, for the council member to win, and then pick a question that they want to, to investigate as well, so lots of, lots of ways this could be taken, but it's just a, just kind of, um, this is a sniff of what, what it could be.
Yes.
And that's, that's it really, for, for this bit, so, uh, we're passing on to.
Yep.
President Dean.
Yeah, so that's, that's everything for.
We're going to go with, like, yeah. Yeah, I mean. Because of this queue, I mean.
My speed's, hold on, just come on.
Yeah, I mean, I think in terms of, yeah, you, you can see it there at a sort of, at an LSOA level, you can see that there are colors. But you wouldn't, I would be, it would be odd to see different colors at those other chart pieces, because you, because once you start to aggregate the LSOA, I mean, to pick a chart piece, you'd start to think, if the one was red and one was blue, you think, well, what the hell is going to do with that?
Well, at least it was like that, right? If, if you do see something like that, then, uh, but if you break it down by question, you probably would see, because this is all of the questions combined for an overall score.
Yeah.
You're going to see less discrepancy than you would if you look at a specific question, right?
Yes.
Yeah, yep, yeah.
So, um, yeah.
But I mean, this is, this is quite interesting, because, you know, if you're a councillor and you're, um, you know.
You're red.
You, you'll sort of be there, or you're down there in the southwest, you know, the far southwest of the council, you'll start to think, well, okay, so what, what is going on with my residents there? So it is, it is, it, so in a way, this is useful, looking at both CCG, you know, if you're in a CCG, or if you're, if you're looking at a district borough level, just to see that there are some districts and boroughs that have, you know, some, some sort of real negative score. Because they tend to even each, when you put them all together, they tend to even each other, so you end up with that.
I was sort of surprised that you didn't see more clustering, like you didn't see the reds kind of together in an area, you know? So you've got some of the reds on the right-hand side there, but there's, you know, kind of strong blues in between them. So, you know, just at least maybe that's my US perspective coming into things, there tends to be more.
I mean, yeah.
Blue around the outside, red.
Yeah. It's like a bullseye.
So I suppose you'd down, probably with these, they'd be down to quite low numbers, aren't they, so, you know, we're talking about margin of error here. Aren't we, I guess?
Yeah, well, I suppose anything that's close to zero means that everybody's neutral.
Yeah.
So you, you know, and for everybody to be satisfied, you should, the darker the blue, the more satisfied they are. So we're seeing pale blues here, which means that there's no high scores.
Yeah.
Or no, no very high scores, it's just.
Yeah, yeah. I think what you're saying is right, you, you'd almost want to say, if you could sort of drag it over time and see the colors change, then you'd sort of, yeah.
Yeah, now, another thing we could add is, you know, they, they click on an S, an LSOA or a, or a district or something, and it could pop up a little, you know, spark line or something like that.
Yeah.
There's all kinds of ways we can take that.
I just wanted to ask, so we did also ask, um, because Craig kind of said he'd do the, uh, the wards data as well, but, um, but I think we asked him a bit later in the day, and I think it was quite difficult for him in the time to get it together, but is that something that's of interest as a geographical level?
Yeah, I, I mean, yeah, so with the wall, I suppose, so you'd end up with quite, you've got quite small numbers.
Yes.
So I suppose the, uh, in terms of reliability at that level, the data you're getting. I think, um, so there's electoral, the electoral ward would be more interesting to members, I think, rather than being more caveat. You know, they were looking at it to say, you know, this is, this data, you know, is basically quite small base number. But yeah, I mean, that, you know, or they just eat up anything, when it's sort of expressed to, from a, sort of a map or geography, they, they tend to, because they can homely on certain parts of their, their, you know, area, their patch where they know, you know, they've got issue, already got issues, and that's how they can sort of see those little things, so, yeah. That would be interesting. Do you need to use a show more, you know, to the other? Please. The request, Nico.
Okay, so our second task was to fill out a dashboard for the residents, so it would be more informative than actionable. So what we choose is to put a map for the districts here, so that people can just select their district and see how the values change, and then we pick just the questions that were more like suitable for our intent. So first of all, the overall satisfaction, how satisfied or dissatisfied are you with your neighborhood as a place to live? And take me everything into account, how satisfied or dissatisfied are you with the ways our council runs things? So that is the first thing that one can see, and we choose the colors so that we have like sort of a sentiment analysis from dissatisfied, very dissatisfied, neither satisfied nor dissatisfied, but yeah, there are basically shades of red and shades of blue, so that you can see exactly what's going on. And then we, um, used the net satisfaction score as the sum of the blues, basically, uh, less the reds divided by the total, so that there is like a unique number for, for each of them. And we built these spark lines with the values of all the previous questionnaires, so that one can see exactly how this question went in the, in the last years. But with the same to keep them like spark lines and not more, uh, more, more important in the dashboard, because this is not exactly what you want to see if you're a resident, if you're a resident, you're more interested in, okay, let me, let me see, um, this quarter, what's going on in my council, so that's, and it's sorted, it's sorted so that, you know, you can see from the most satisfactory question to the less, which are road mountains.
Yeah.
Do you want to click through the map?
Yeah, clicking on the map, you can just sort all the other charts. You want me to pick some?
Yeah, no, no, it's, no, it's just a push, pushable on some one thing.
Can you also change the filter?
Yes, and there's a gender filter, so that one can pick females or males and see if something, uh, changed in the way males or females, uh, perceive these services, so primary schools, secondary schools. Because if you're a resident, maybe you want to see exactly you, uh, your, your democracy, but we want to, we didn't want to add more like age, for instance, in this, because otherwise, um, the, the, the numbers of results.
The sample size is.
Yeah, the sample size, yeah, it was a problem of sample size. So this, this is enough, because you have males in the district, and you have quite a good sample, but more, filtering more, it will, like, mislead the answers, so. See, and this is the first, just overall satisfaction, uh, but we have another dashboard here in which we picked this question about how much of a problem are the following statements? Which basically works as the previous one, but just because it was a completely different kind of question, we decided to, uh, put it in another dashboard. So that, yeah, there, there are statements, so problem for noise neighbors in your neighborhood, to traffic congestion, um, the, 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 the dashboard works similarly as the previous one, but just to focus on something different. And here, we use this space for making the customer price of the council, which now, it looks very small, but, I'm sorry. It should, should be bigger, and, yes, you, you, of course, can change the text for, utilize what you want. We, we think that the customer price is the most important thing to show to the residents. Um, also here, the, the filter applies, so if you filtered in the previous dashboard, you have also this picture, of course, but you can change it whenever you are, so if you're here, you can change here, then change again to district, and see exactly this single problem how behaves for the district and for the monitoring. So, hope it's good.
It's pretty.
So the circle represents the, um.
The satisfaction score, yeah.
The satisfaction score for that question overall, so it's basically a summary of all the colors.
Yeah.
More or less, and then, um, so, you know.
We put a, a legend, which is very small here, but it's explaining. About what is it, because, yeah, it is for the public, so, uh, maybe not everybody knows what, uh, net satisfactory index is, so we put there the calculation exactly.
Okay, and so the gray represents people, say, don't know. Yeah.
Yes. Yes. And also here, we see some negative numbers, which are twelve and thirteen, we decided to push them to the zero, because otherwise, it was like.
Yeah.
Misleading, so. Yeah, our goal is, was to mean, to build something that was informative.
Yeah, I mean, it's a, you know, it's absolutely amazing, to be honest, it's really, really good, and that's exactly the sort of thing that residents, officers, just, you know, they'll just love that, so, yeah.
So one of the things we're wanting to, so do you think that the, having the, the lines for the trends is helpful? Because, you know, the, the bars are showing you just the latest snapshot, so we're, again, we're trying to think of the context of, um, you know, seeing the overall picture, which way are things trending? So like, for example, on the, you just look at the top two on the right, the top, you know, it looked like it went up for a few quarters, and then it steeped dive for some reason, it looks like it's recovering, right?
Sure.
And then kind of a few more down from that, there's one that's just steadily increasing as you go, well, it looks like it's the fifth one down.
Yeah.
On that second.
Household waste, uh.
The waste.
Household, household waste sites, or whatever, you know, whatever that means.
Yeah.
Um, I should know now that I was there, but, I mean, I just looked at it, so. Yeah, so I, you know, I, I found that really interesting, that, you know, fortunately, it looks like most things are going up and to the right, so this is a classic example of charts that go up and to the right are generally good.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So how many, how many, in, in that column, how many quarters have you got in those trend lines?
Every one that we had in the dataset, right?
Absolutely.
We have in the, in the toolkit, the quarter, no?
Yes.
Yeah, so hover over. Do you, do you see the last one?
You hover over, so just hover over the very front, if you can, key one, uh, you can draw this.
Yeah, that's it.
And that also gives you the net satisfaction score for that quarter, if you hover over it.
Okay.
Yeah, so you hover over the dot, and then you see the, the score.
Yeah, I mean, that's really, you know, once again, that's really useful. The thing about data is, um, most people who use data, um, don't want to, uh, spend any time learning the data. They just want, they just want to be spoon-fitted.
Yeah.
Um, and, um, that is those sorts of quick visual cues, and the sorts of things that I find really useful, you know, that be able to sort of look at it quickly and say, oh. And I can just see now, people who work in environment, infrastructure, well, look, our line, our line's consistently going up, whereas your line. So.
Get track together.
Yeah, so, you know.
Yeah, there's one like, it looks like it's like, uh, about five from the bottom, that's just going up and down, you know, they can't.
Now, what are they doing? Yeah, but, but people in these services will say, well, you know, well, that's a peak's there, but that's when we change the service, that's when you pull down. I know you're running, you know, you cut my funding.
Yes.
So it's a wonder.
And it shows it, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Shows it really quickly, yeah.
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 Uh, Dan, did you explain the negatives?
Yes.
Okay.
Can you change the time period?
Uh, no, no.
To shorten it?
You're wrong.
Yeah, the point is.
This is just one quarter on the view.
When we talked to Tim, he wanted it to just be a snapshot of the latest quarters.
Always, oh, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
And that's why we added the trend lines in there, to just, you know, so that it's there if.
If you.
Yeah, for, for reference.
And therefore, couple of deals, so you can just refresh with the new data, and the dashboard will refresh with the latest level possible.
And similarly with the sort.
It will find.
So the way it's sorted is from highest to lowest.
Yeah.
Once you update it, it will then resort itself.
Yeah, it's automatic.
It's sorted based on the overall score, the, the net satisfaction, I keep wanting to call you net promoter score, but net satisfaction score.
Was there anything really surprising to you, just like, I just can't see individual questions here, but anything you can. Well, it's curious, you have the, I was looking at it, the traffic congestion, that it's one of the worst, I think it's the third or the fourth with lowest, uh, score.
Yeah, third from the bottom.
And, yeah, and you, and you can see that it's becoming more a problem, or they are in, 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 in the last, in the last quarters. So it is, it's also a good way to see like, okay, maybe you have some, something to do with the traffic congestion.
What's the peak on that, on that, uh, third from the bottom?
Yeah.
No, up, up, two more up from that one. More? Yeah, two more up. Up, no, no, up higher.
It's in council, here.
Yeah, right there, yeah, what's the.
Yeah, that one.
What's the, what's the date of the peak? Two thousand twelve, so since the beginning of two thousand twelve, it's been going down, so it's, it's on a three-year nose dye.
Yeah.
So that's much. To choose.
And what's the percentage then?
Here is, um.
There it goes.
Here, yeah. Nineteen percent.
Nineteen, and now it's three?
And what's it now? That's a great.
It's.
Score, and now, yeah, it's like three.
Oh, we can see it in the.
Dipper, yeah.
Yeah, so that's a pretty big dip, that's a pretty massive swing, sixteen percent.
Yeah. Yeah.
So it is pretty terrible.
Yeah.
Run your piece there.
Yeah.
We're just acknowledging with that, with that, right on.
I can't, I could, I could not offer an explanation as to why, but there will be people who work in that, yeah, there will be people who work in that service, who will say, well, that's the cause of two thousand two.
Yeah, maybe the, the, the population increased the last two years or something like that, and, and there's more people, more cars, and, yeah.
Well, maybe there's like change in laws or something, yeah.
Yeah, also probably, I mean, it's something people are used to complain about, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, yeah, but they, you would think they would consistently complain about it.
Yeah.
The problem is, they're complaining about it much more than they were, or they're, well, they might not be complaining as much, but they're less satisfied.
See, that, that's where I think that stuff like custom ID would be useful, so if it's someone, at the end of the survey, I noticed a question that was, would you do this survey again? And that would have been really interesting to see if there are people that have just repeatedly answered the survey, see how their satisfaction has changed. So that's where I sort of custom ID.
Yeah, but Tim was concerned that that wouldn't be representative of, statistically representative of the county as a whole, so.
Yeah. That's true.
Um.
Yeah, and they're sort of, in a way, they're supposed to be, so, yeah, they're supposed to be representative. So that, so it's different people that answer the survey each time, and they're all, they're supposed to essentially be the same.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, same, yeah, same sorts of people.
Same sort of, yeah. Yeah.
So, um, we, in a way, we would be interested in the individuals' changes, you know, because there might be factors, uh, quite unique factors that would affect their satisfaction, that would affect someone like them, do you know what I mean?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's, you know, when, when I show that to people, they're gonna, it's gonna vote my way.
How does it compare to previous, I don't know how you analyze.
Well, I keep having, they go, yeah, so, um, it's been very much, you know, sort of Excel, and, uh, you know. And not, not particularly, yeah, not particularly, um, presented in a way that I would say, um, lends itself to, um, people. Change based on that data that I've seen there, it's, it's, you really need to dig into it, you probably look at that, and you'd be tasked with raw data.
You don't trust it.
Yeah, you'd be, you'd sort of necessarily be inclined to, to run some analysis, which sorts of people make.
It goes to committee and takes, but it, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so the good thing about this is, you know, um, if a committee member has an analyst that works for them or something, they can easily then dig into these questions from this point, right? This is just the launching pad for answering other questions, and that's where a tool like Cutlow becomes so effective, because it makes it so easy to answer the questions, right? All the data's already prepared for it, and all they have to do is go dig into it, you know, it's, it's super simple, so, um.
Yeah.
I might have missed the start of the week, and what's the intention, is this thing be deployed on the project or?
We could, we could bring up the, do you want to bring up the, we could bring up the goals, um, that we wrote down at the beginning of the week, and kind of look through those, um.
Goals? Yeah.
We are, yeah, we did talk about things on Tableau, probably cool, yeah, if you don't have an issue, it's, it's.
It's public data.
Yeah.
So I think we, I think said the only caveat is if you're showing anything that's, that's very, very detailed.
Daring.
Yeah. Then we might need to sort of look it up, we might, but it's all publicly available data.
Facts, facts.
Yeah, exactly, but we might.
Except for the council member, that.
Yeah. Yeah, 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 so, yeah, yeah.
It would actually be interesting, so that, that traffic question would be interesting to see which county, if it's different based on the different districts. Because, you know, because if you click on a district in that map, it'll update that, that curve.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
And it'd be interesting to see if, is that a whole, is it the same way in every district, or is it just one or two, you know? And that's where, you know.
Yeah.
So you can easily answer that question with that one.
Yeah, it's, um, it's the M twenty-three, the M three, and the M twenty-five run through, sorry, so it'd be interesting to see how it's sort of in the, in the districts and boroughs that.
Yeah.
Um, have those, yeah, you know, how, how that sort of data changes.
Interesting.
So this is sort of the goals that we had, um, after the meeting that we had with you and Tim.
So this is sort of the goals that we have, um, after the meeting that we have reviewed, Tim? Um, so.
Oh, you guys noted yesterday whether we did it?
Yeah. Well, I did, I mean, you did, you say we. Um, so that's where they're weird. Um, so, yeah, so our first goal was to engage audiences, that's, this is where we split off. Um, do you feel like the elected officials would have like an explanation for any sort of this?
Yeah, uh, I mean, you know, what you showed me, I think, you know, there, there's definitely more that could be done there, but in terms of, and they'll probably want to dig into it a bit further, but, you know, what was there was, you know, was, was really interesting, and it's a good way to engage them. Basically, the difference between the, the members is they don't, they, they don't have officers under them who could do, who would then, um, do the exploratory analysis.
In BS.
So they, they, they sort of run the story, and then, yeah, and that's, and that's what we try to do with, with that.
So would you then say with the one we've got, would we need to do it at a high level, like, just, just?
No, I think you're saying that when there's an issue, there's nobody that can dig into it.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so they, they wanna, so they, they'll wanna look at it, they want to cut it apart, you were saying over time and that sort of stuff, they want to look at a lot of those things.
Yeah. Okay, so, I mean, in general, that, that dashboard was meant to be more just, here's the information, it's kind of explanatory, but it does have basic explorations in it,
Yeah.
There's some of the clicking and the head and stuff like that, so.
Okay. So the second one was for the residents, so that's exploratory, um, I guess, uh, what we want to do is something really simple, Easton side line.
So they're, they're thinking there is, you know, if you're a resident, you're gonna probably immediately just go to your district, right? And see how your district is doing, and it seems like it does that pretty effectively. The second one.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, so, third one is influencing influencers, so making results actionable, would you say that the, so elected officials, maybe the residents as well, would that mean that you're influencing the people that, you know, are often making decisions?
With the residents, why, I mean, I don't, I don't, are there any actions for residents to take, I mean, I don't, what action can be?
Yeah, we talked, we talked about that, it's, you know, it's like, how much, you know, real power. Other than calling their council members and saying, you know, what's going on in traffic today, actually? You know.
You've already done that, right?
I don't have a car, so that's mine.
With the, yeah, I think, um, I think with the, yeah, the, the elected officials, well, being able to sort of chop and change between different geographies, like, sort of CCGs depending on. So I think I said tonight in, in the, um, the initial briefing, that, um, some of them will have, um, a portfolio that's based on a CCG geographies, that's based on districts and boroughs, so they naturally drift towards one of the others, so, I mean, that makes them, to, to,
Yeah.
If you just present it as a, a district and borough, then you cut out all those people who work, who are working help, are being, want to look at it.
So, so some of the actions for the council members dashboard, then, we, so we could add those in as filter options.
Yes.
And then we need to fix the question, add the questions, so we know which numbers go, what questions go with which, uh, numbers, and then fixing the arrows, yeah.
I think, yeah, so, yeah, I think that's.
But those are just really quick things, so, yeah.
I think they, I, I, like I said, with members, they, they would just want to look at it, they would, they, they just sort of, they'll just want thirty seconds, so that sort of being able just to look at it like that, it's really useful.
Yeah.
And then they'll start firing questions on the apps.
But it makes sense to default it to the county overall, right?
Yeah.
And just give them.
Because, yeah, you, yeah, you wouldn't.
It'll just show that they can just pick their district and then, or their LSA or whatever, CCG, and then they're done.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, you don't really know, when they come to it, you wouldn't really know what they would be interested in.
Right, right.
So they might be looking, they might be sitting there with the help of, being help, and they might be sitting there with, you know, thinking about, because they might want to look at something quite, you know, might want to look at a few.
Total.
NSAs together, so, yeah.
So this will be the focal point of the next council members meeting, right, where, you know, you'll get up there and you'll, you'll answer all the questions and everything.
I can't believe this is gonna be a firing line. Yeah, I mean, there's gonna be a lot more questions, well, I think it's, it's, it's good, um, you know, yeah, I think, yeah, yeah, we will, uh, they'll definitely present this to them. So, yeah, and then duck to cover.
Holiday. So number three is where we wanted to do a comparison to the borough versus the county, so we sort of did that, we have it overall, we, and then you can draw it out.
Hmm.
Um, within nationwide, we were, we, well, I, we're not sure the survey is actually done nationwide, it's the same survey in the same format, so we wouldn't go as in commercial basis.
Yeah.
Um.
Yeah.
I think that was a shot in the dark, didn't it?
That was a nice to have.
Yeah.
Um, so then geographic comparisons with CCGs, the NSAs, the issue of local authorities, which is a bit of a buzz round, um, postcodes, we didn't really think we needed them, because, um, the NSAs sort of covered that, um.
Well, the interesting with the postcodes is that using Alteryx, you can make very interesting analysis, for example, in, if there are some people that are not, uh, very happy with the schools, for example, and you have the postcodes, you can analyze, okay, people that start not to be very happy when they have a school like more than five miles away, for example. Um, you can make that kind of, that kind of additional analysis.
Yeah.
With spatial and if, if you have more detailed location of, of each survey, and you can go deeper in, in, in that, in that part.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
So we've already asked like fifty more questions so far in this hour, are there just some things we can do?
Yeah.
So. So yeah, that links into the schools and parks, and that I would mention, um, that was one of the things we really wanted to look into, sort of doing some spatial and then based predictive analytics, which, yeah, you can just do it alternates, with spatial points and objects has its own maps, and then you can also export it, export it to Tableau and use like Tableau's visual maps as well, so that's pretty cool. Um, as I said, there's not enough data because of the granularity we need of the customer.
Hmm.
So. Um, the mosaic codes, we, we, we wanted to do stuff with, but it never sort of materialized to them.
Yeah, there was, um, yeah, there's, maybe you just get carried away with some different types of data, really, so, uh, trying to just keep it simple, but we thought, um, well, this, you know, we sort of thought initially with mosaic code, um, using one of the district maps that we have, a particular measure, so it's the satisfaction score, you've got your map on the left, click on it, click on your district of interest, it brings up the timeline, and underneath that, it might then have a breakdown of your mosaic and, um, you know, for that particular district to answer, so that was kind of the idea.
Yeah.
Could get around to it in time, but it's certainly something that we'll do in the future.
Yeah.
Mosaic is of so much potential, because there's, yes, there's a lot.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, it's huge, matter of fact, isn't it, I was linking this to that, then.
That gives you a lot more on the council's side as well, like, with terms of scenes.
Yeah. Yeah.
Um, demographics, we, um, because Nico said, we looked into, uh, with the filter, uh, we've added in male and female, uh, we've not really touched the religion part, even though we have the data, we'll pass out ready to play with, um, and similarly with the Adrianians. Yeah. Um, the good news, bad news part, um, that's sort of the satisfied, dissatisfied, so splitting it out and having a look at what's good and what's bad. Questions are missing, and key drivers, results. So are there any questions that you sort of came with, that we haven't really looked into or answered, or have been giving avenues to look down?
Uh, I mean, you know, there's so, you could literally spend the rest of the year. There's so many extra things you could look at, um, I think, from our perspective, the, the mosaic stuff's quite interesting to see how it's, say, um, I, I understand it's, you know, you have exactly, have enough, you know, a lot of time to, to work with this, um, so I think that's probably the thing. But, I mean, I had fairly high expectations, I have to say, but, I mean, what I've been shown has, has met those, exceeded them by, you know, quite a margin, I think, you know, it's amazing what we've been able to do in a week. Just, you know, so, um, I'm, I'm sure once, uh, I play around, I'll probably have a few more questions to answer, so dazzled at the moment.
Um, I think here is with the Alteryx workflow, all you need to do next would be get the next data source out.
Yeah.
Yeah, and run it.
And then press play.
Yeah.
That's it.
Yeah, that, and that, that's, that saves us a huge amount of time.
Plus with it, we automatically update with the live extracts, you send it into the Tableau as well, and then you just refresh that, as long as you refresh that data source, your entire visualization.
Yeah, and that's good, because then this is time to, to do what we really paid to do, which is do the, sort of the deep dive analysis, really thinking about what it means.
Exactly.
Exactly.
So the time saved actually helps you to invest in the data. Okay. Yep. Any other questions?
Yep.
Thanks, listen. It's a good project.
Any questions on the, anybody have any questions on the, uh, chat? Oh, it sounds like there's somebody on there. Oh, the sound's bad, okay, that was about the sound, okay, any, any questions on the livestream? Comments? Nothing? Some, somebody talk to us? James Dunkerly, you're always a, a.
No, but they are muted, oh.
Oh, well, maybe you should unmute them, then. Unmute, unmute, unmute everybody, though, because then I don't, yeah, just unmute Tim, Paul, James.
It looks great, guys.
Hey!
We meet, we meted ourselves there.
Who's that talking? Tim?
That's me, yeah.
It's me.
One manly, yeah, um, yeah, no, the work's great, guys, it's really good, I love the, I love the sort of small but really important design tweaks you've all done to, to make stuff stand out, that's, that's really good.
Cool. Anybody else? Craig?
I think. Everyone's commenting in the chat, I think.
Awesome, they should just speak out loud. Anyone? No? Oh. Everybody? Okay. I guess that's it, nobody wants to speak for themselves. So who's the guy? So, uh, so let's see, so James is just a fan, uh, everybody else looks like they're from the information lab.
Yeah.
James, are you still there? Dunkerly? We're gonna put him on the spot. We can't hear you. Is this your way of not speaking to us, James? Yeah. Okay, wow. James is regular, a regular, uh. All right, well, everybody have a good weekend. Goodbye.
Bye.
For the sign off, I gotta rejoin the soundbar.
Is that a recording session?
Nice music.